Why now you got that song stuck in my head, thank you very much.
I don't know how long it'll be there, but it's been there for a week for me.
Seven nation by White Stripes?
White Stripes.
White Stripes.
Oh, yes, yes.
White Stripes.
Maybe.
Jack Black, Jack Black and Meg, what's her name? Is that right?
Jack Black.
Jack White, Jack.
I was gonna say, it's not Jack Black.
Jack White and Meg, his sister girlfriend.
So we're not sure that Holly's gonna be here.
Yeah, she sent a text to us.
Yeah, she is. No, should we?
I mean, they're pretty, pretty good.
I just had a text yesterday. Like Rush, I mean, uh, Barry did game last year. So it goes.
Meeting, everybody, thank you for coming. I'd like to call to order the Sauter City Council meeting for Monday, December eighth, 2021. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Louis.
Here.
Here. Let the record show that Councilman Leo still plans on getting to the, to the meeting. She's running a little late. So our first order of business this evening is what's referred to in our charter as the organizational meeting. At this meeting, the mayor and the mayor pro temp are elected amongst the council members. They serve for a term of one year. And so that being said, I will open the tables for a nomination for mayor.
Mayor.
Scott.
Nominate Garnet Lewis for mayor of Sauter.
Second.
Okay, we have one nominee and a second.
I don't think you need a second for that.
Okay.
Just.
All right, the nominations will be closed. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Back in.
Yes.
Louis.
I got me.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
All right.
All right, what's that? Our nominations for mayor pro temp.
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Mr. Scott Dean for mayor pro temp.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Where I come from, we have to say it three times. That's my thing. Any other nominations? All right, with that, we'll close nominations for mayor pro temp. Scott Dean's been nominated by Lauren Stanton. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson, Hughes, Leo, Dean, Louis.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, congratulations, Scott. The company. All right, very good. I'll go ahead and keep us moving. Everybody should have received a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Any comments or questions about the minutes from last meeting? If not, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes from the October 25th meeting.
Fair motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes, meeting minutes of October 25th, 2021.
All right, very good. Any other changes, additions? If not, do we need a roll call on this, or is it just a all in favor say aye?
All right.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you. All right. Mayor's comments. It feels rather weird. Mark, do you have any comments?
Certainly appreciate the council's support as I take on this role, and I wanted to first thank Mark Beckon for his leadership, his willingness to step up in the last year and lead us forward in a very positive direction. I think his leadership made all the difference in the world, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Chris, Chris Peterson's not here tonight, and it's too bad, but it's being recorded, so we can send it on to her. I really wanted to send along my thanks to her as well for her time and dedication to the city and the many things that she's been a part of that have made such a great place to live. So thanks for her as well. As I, as I step into this role, I was reflecting about how far we've come. It's been a great year. You think about it, we have a new manager, and he's taking us forward and really streamlining our policies and procedures, and we have a new clerk. And last, this early this spring, we had the first strategic planning meeting that we've had in a long time. And I think that's really helped us to set a path forward in a very clear and concise manner, and I think that really helps not only us, but our constituents where we're going. So I look forward to the next planning session. I think that'll be a, a nice next step in where we're going. And so with that, those are my comments, and I'll move on to the city managers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City managers' report was covered in your workshop agenda packet. It's page 13 of this packet. Happy to address any questions if you have any.
Going ahead and move forward. Agenda changes, I'd like to add our county commissioner Dean Cappinga to the list of guest speakers, and I'll do it in pecking order, so he'll get to go first. That's all right. Any other agenda changes? All right, with that.
As all of you know, we're going through a portionment, and many of us had issues with that, and I thank you for many of you just raising your voice going, wait a minute, we aren't sure about this thing. I wasn't sure about it either. As far as you're on a board, you know, all the issues with funds, as far as this is a majority of three that would decide. Now, we have a $95 million budget. We really deal with about 35 million that we're directly in control of, and that scares me, you know, as far as the three wrong people that aren't money managers and so forth. And then I'll have seven different townships, you know, so I had an issue with that also. So I made my voice known within that, and it is five, and I'll do the best I can. Also, you're dealing with your final budgets. We're doing the same thing. We have 12 different unions, and we're having a tough time keeping employees as far as just the way the market is, and you're, you're realizing that too, I'm sure. And we just did a wage study to go, wait a minute, we have to be within, to get the people that we want. What can we do to make sure we contain the leadership that we've had? And so we're doing some major things as far as financially to make sure that we're, or we should be within that, and that's been tough, you know, but we're there, and we're doing what we should do. Also, just mentioned Health and Human Services, the whole thing of COVID, you've seen just the, I mean, what that means, you know, so give you a little idea of that now. Because of this new strain that's come out, Angelique just believes that to do the testing, to do the, she's in charge of, we have 22 places you could go to get vaccines within the county, but she's in charge of those vaccines, and she's looking at needing about another 2.3 million a year, you know, just to sustain that. And that's, that's, that's not a firm number. That's her, man, if this happens, this happens, this happens to be safe. I need something like that. And so we're even dealing with that as far as now we're, we have our, our final funds that just came in, that 23 million. You know, we want to stick that into broadband to make sure that we get some of our rural areas for the kids as far as, we got to get that for the economic development of the county. And also, we put a lot of money into a water study as far as so that all the areas will know you can put a subdivision in because of water sound with it underneath it. So we wanted to put really that 23 million into that, but I'm sure because of COVID, we'll be putting some money within the COVID funds, you know, within what that is too. Just to make sure you try to keep track of it for your people. Senior services, where I'm on that committee, we're just doing, doing a marketing campaign to try to make sure the 20,000 senior citizens know all the, you know, as far as there's a mileage that's there for them as far as for home services, people to come in to clean your house, there's food for them. And so make sure that you're marketing that to the citizens as far as, wait a minute, if you need this, I mean, make sure you go on the website, allencounty.org, because they have these services that people paid for you to get. So check that out. We're getting a new website for the county. Still go to allencounty.org, but it's gonna start December 1st. That will be going. Make sure you just keep track of this. It's exciting about this, this business park, you know, as far as the landfill in Kent County's gonna be full in four years. They want to do this new business park there. It's not only gonna have renewable natural gas, fertilizers, recyclable commodities that they'll sell out of it. It's gonna be really something what they'll do. But they're talking about 400,000 tons of garbage a year. Imagine that. They need that type of source as far as to put in there of, of that magnitude. Also, my area, as far as Hamilton, they're getting a light finally in by the school over there. It's been needed 136 and M40, and also that road just north of it, that's 48th Street, they're gonna finally straighten that out because you can hardly get on there with buses and so forth. That's being done. But we're, we're working hard, and thank you so much for letting me speak. Good seeing everybody and meeting you two. Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. We've got the chief with us tonight. Chief Janik, you want to join us and tell us what you got?
Congratulations, Madam Mayor. I congratulate you too, Mark. After the meeting, I guess, okay. I'm Greg Janik, Sagittarius Township Fire District, Sagittarius Township resident. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I just wanted to share with you a summary of the incidents of October. You can see the incidents are still ramping up in contrast to last year, where we had kind of a slowdown, surprisingly, because of COVID. So we're, that shows 817 on calls up to date. Today, we're at 831 calls. We're up about 14%. So that's something that usually people like to know on a benchmark. Sunday is a busy day. That really fluctuates from Tuesday to Friday, just all over the spectrum. Busiest time of the day is during the day, and that's what is staffing challenges for Sagittarius Fire, having enough available personnel during the day. Something that you might want to know is overlapping calls would be any call that occurs within an hour of another call. Why is that important? Resource allocation staffing. Halloween night, we had three calls going on at one time, plus an event of, who knows, 7,000 or 8,000 people. Some people thought it was 10,000. Very challenging for any agency and certainly for Sagittarius Fire. The number one call for our district would be nice to know, what's the number one call? It's falls. What do we do about falls? Something we're always trying to prevent. Without a doubt, it leads the call volume of any type of call, followed by general sickness. Here's something I think you're gonna hear more often. Advanced Life Support, ALS, AMR life. We had one of our three calls, Halloween, Halloween night was a very severe injury in Sagittarius City. And you hear the response from dispatch, there's no ambulance available. Dispatch, life, AMR, this is their territory. They back each other up. But in this case, we were very fortunate that life ambulance had somebody available because Fenville ambulance is a large area to cover down Pullman, down Lee. Very challenging demographics there. So that was a terrifying moment, to say the, say the least. What else I can share with you? 50% increase in motor vehicle incidents should be no surprise. Just look at Blue Star Highway. The traffic on there is, is incredible. No surprise, marine responses is drawing to a close. All our boats are out of the water, and most of the calls end up in township. But interesting, look at Sagittarius City for less than 1,000 population. Interesting, 31%. You have the events typically here. You have the activity, the draw that tends to bring people downtown, thus increased call volume. So I will spare you the other 38 pages of this, and if you have any questions, I will try to answer them. If I can't, I will get you the answers.
Any questions for Chief Janik? Chief, I have one. Is, is that the first time that's happened where you've had the no trucks available?
No, it's happening more often.
It's happening more often.
Yes.
It's just starting to rap. It's just rapid.
No one wants to be a paramedic anymore. It's, it's just not. It's not a great revenue stream for a career choice, unfortunately. They're underpaid. They can be nurses or home, home nurses and make a lot more money. With your permission, can I just touch on COVID clinics? Okay, so, and this idea came from, from Garnet, so to her credit. So there's some COVID clinics coming up at Sagittarius High School, at the middle school, which is kind of great. All people would qualify. We're gonna ramp up with children, five to 11 years old, which is kind of a interesting point to be at. Booster shots will be coming into fruition, and there's one November 30th and December 28th, 3:30 to 6:30. So a couple of people have volunteered for that. Our retired David Blatt comes out of retirement, retirement for that. Garnet's on there. I'm sorry, Garnet. Kathy Sturm and a couple of us are volunteering for that. So make no mistake, COVID has not gone away. It's here. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Chief?
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Very good. Thank you. I skipped over Lieutenant Enstville. Is he on the line by chance?
No, I think he's at Deer Camp, so.
Oh, well.
Yeah, but he was, he was at our workshop, and you got to.
Yes, very good. All right, then we'll just scoot all over. All right, this is the portion in our meeting where we open it up for public comment. At this time, we ask public to share any comment they have, limit their comments to three minutes, and comments must be focused on, again, items only. Any public comment at this time? Nope. All right, very good. There are no consent agenda items, but we'll move on to requests for payment. Like, entertain a motion to approve accounts payable.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve accounts payable for $22,142.61, which is the lowest amount I've ever seen.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Truster and second by Stanton to approve accounts payable. Any comments, questions? Do we need a roll call or is just a?
I think it's a roll call.
All right. We're gonna do a roll call, Jean. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Louis.
Yes. All right, very good.
Future reference. I think I was wrong. I think you can just voice on that.
I'll study up on when I should have. Go to mayor school. Okay, no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business. So with that, let's go to new business zoning ordinance resolution 21108-8.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. This item is on page 54 of your agenda packet. I believe we have Cindy on the Zoom call, but you did review this item during, during your workshop. One of the items that I will point out is in the sample motion, there's a second sentence that's in italics. And that's if you wanted to expand, you know, something you touched on at your meeting is expanding the zoning district that this would apply to. So just be cautious with that when you make your motion tonight. If you're not prepared to expand it into the R1 zoning district slash CR, then don't do it. What I took away from your workshop meeting was that you would, you would apply this ordinance change to the zoning district that was presented, but you could always expand it at a later date. So with that, any questions that you might have for, for Cindy?
Cindy, are you with us?
I am with you. I'm your voice from the sky. I don't really have anything to add to what Ryan had to say. We did go over in some detail at the workshop meeting, but this would allow for the front yard setback to be reduced when certain conditions are allowed, are found to exist. And the expansion to the R1, that's, I can do that through the Planning Commission at our next regular meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, Cindy kind of answered the question I had was had the planning commission have the opportunity to review the R1 expansion, and apparently not.
Right, right.
So I think it is better that we wait for.
Yeah, so to scratch that portion, yeah, to scratch that portion in italics. Any other questions for Cindy? Clarification? We did, we had a great, for those folks who are here and who've dialed in, we had quite a, actually two discussions, one to introduce this, and then at the workshop Thursday, quite a good discussion about this. So therefore, if you have any question about what that discussion was, I'd refer you back to the recording from the meeting on Thursday. All right.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'll motion to adopt zoning ordinance amendment 21108-8 to amend section 154 dot 025 our forecer, chapter 154, title 15 of the Code of the City of Sagittarius entitled land usage.
I'll support.
All right. So we have a motion from Dean and a second from Beckon. Any questions? Further questions or, all right, again, I haven't been to mayor school, so do I need a?
A roll call or a resolution?
All right, very good. Go for it, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Very good. Next item on the agenda is the capitalization policy.
Madam Mayor, thank you. This comes from our finance director, who is also on the call, so if you have any questions, I'm sure Peter can help us out tonight. But this was reviewed at the workshop, and really, this is just a capitalization policy. And this came about with our audit, the fact that we don't have one, and this is standard accounting principles. Happy to have the policies in here. We have the, the draft resolution for you. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Yes.
I'd love to approve resolution 211108B as presented, adopting the City of Sagittarius capitalization policy.
All right, very good. We have a motion from Truster and a second from Dean to approve the capitalization policy. Any other questions concerned? Anything from Peter while we've got him on the line? Hi, Peter.
Hello.
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, it's something I thought we had in the past, multiple audits over the years, and finally, when they actually asked to see a copy, and I looked, and I looked, and looked, it must have grown wings in the past and flew away because we, I couldn't find one on file. I said, well, we'll create one to keep everybody happy.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, anything else? That, we do a roll call, right?
Yeah.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is the engineering oversight for Campbell Road project. Campbell Road Engineering, please.
Madam Mayor, this is on page 63 of your agenda packet. Discussed at your workshop meeting. This is for the engineering oversight of the Campbell Road project, which is well underway. Things are going well to date. Recommended motion is to approve the engineering service contract for the Campbell Road project in the amount of $42,600.
Yep. I move to approve the engineering service contract for the Campbell Road project in the amount of $42,600.
All second. All right, we have a motion from Stanton and a second from Dean to approve the engineering services contract. This is not a resolution, so we can probably just do a roll call.
Voice vote.
Voice vote. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? All right, very good. Thank you. Next is the extension of the Allen County Sheriff's Agreement.
Madam Mayor, this is on page 67 of your agenda packet. Discussed at your workshop. The contract that you have in place with the Sheriff's Department, or I should say you did, expired June 30th, 2021. You entered into that contract March 12th, 2018, 2018. Alleghen County Sheriff's Department has indicated that they'd like to see some changes to the contract, dealing with liability and insurance coverage. Understanding that's gonna take some time to work through, I recommended that we extend our existing contract until we can get to those details. So this is an extension to the end of the year. A recommended motion would be to approve the contract extension with Alleghen County Sheriff's Department remaining effective through December 31st, 2021.
All right.
Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the contract extension with the Alleghen County Sheriff's Department remaining in effect through December 31st, 2021.
I'll have, I'll take it from Ken. How about that? A motion made by Dean and second by Truster to approve the extension of the Allen County Sheriff's Agreement. A motion made by Dean and second by Truster to approve the extension of the Allen County Sheriff's Agreement. This should probably be just a voice vote. Any other questions or concerns? Again, we had a good discussion about this. Ken and I also had a conversation today and he was pretty heavily involved in this agreement last time. And I think if we could utilize him, if you need him on the next, the next one, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
All right, with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next up is zoning board of appeals alternate position appointment. My understanding, we have a vacancy on the zoning board of appeals for alternate. And Kate McColan has submitted her application, many of us know Kate in her many years with the planning commission, very, very experienced. So with that, she is being recommended for a term expiring July the first, two, twenty twenty-three.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to approve the mayor's appointment, Kate McColan, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Becken and a second by Stanton to approve the mayor's appointment as presented. Any other, any questions, concerns? She's a good one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And lastly, we have a proposal for landscape improvements at Village Square Park and the Rose Garden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this item is on page seventy-seven, discussed at your workshop. Just a brief summary on this one because this one's a lot of, lot of money. Deficiencies were noted in the Village Square area, basketball court, the Village Square, the playground area. Also, the Mize Rose Garden that was pointed out to us. So staff went ahead and they put together a scope of work to correct those deficiencies. And we went out for proposals, reached out to four contractors, two of which did not respond. Two showed up to do the walkthrough. We've received one proposal, and that's what you see in your packet. Two separate costs, the Village Square area would, the funding would come out of the general fund. And that's in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. The Rose Garden has an existing fund, which has north of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. So you'd utilize that. To correct those deficiencies, the amount would be forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. In aggregate, it is seventy-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. The recommended motion would be to approve the proposal received by Landscape Design Services for improvements to the Village Square Park area and Rose Garden in the amount of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the manager? Go ahead, Ken.
I'd move to approve the proposal received by Landscape Design Services, received from, for improvements to the Village Square Park area and Rose Garden in the amount of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, a motion from D, Truster and a second from Dean to approve proposal received by Landscape Design. Any other questions or concerns? All right, so also just a voice vote, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Good. Okay, with that, we've arrived at the portion where public comment is accepted from anyone who would like to say anything. Russ Gardner, welcome.
Hello, Russ. What, Ryan being this fast? Hi, Russ Gardner, two forty-five Spear Street, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm grateful to once again be elected to Sagittuck City Council. I look forward to serving with you and serving our residents. I'm excited to let you know that I took my oath of office and was sworn in on Friday, November fifth. Thank you very much, Jamie. Because of this, I remain a bit perplexed that I'm not sitting with you tonight at the conference table. So just want to put that out there. The fact that I'm not eligible to be sitting with council during this first meeting is an issue that I raised with city leadership following the election. I believe the current practice of, of having new council members not be seated until the second meeting in November is not a clear interpretation of the city charter. So just want to put that on the, put that on the table. That aside, I look forward to working with the council to resolve this minor issue and many important issues facing, facing the community. Sorry, a little nervous, so thank you very much. I look forward to spending time with each of you and serving the city and serving our residents, so.
All right, very good.
Second item of interest, Mount Baldhead, my life for the past six months or so, and Scott's as well. Tomorrow at eleven o'clock, we have a historic preservation consultant, Jennifer Metz from Grand Rapids, who was referred through the Sagittuck Douglas History Center, is going to be, going to be meeting us at the site. Ryan will be joining us as well, Scott, myself, several others from the work group will be there. And basically, spend some time just going through the site, taking a look around and coming up to some suggestions regarding kind of next steps for the entire site. So at this point, we've gotten the building painted, it's completely done for the season. If you don't follow us on social media, take a hike up there and you can kind of see the work that's been done. It's night and day in terms of where it was when we started. So very pleased with everybody's work and, and all the volunteer time that's been. We haven't even counted the hours, we probably should have done that, but that's, it's probably well in excess of five hundred hours a summer of effort. And thanks again to the city and Ryan for the support too. There's been no questions whenever we've asked for things, there's been like, okay, how can we help? That's made our, our work much, much easier and much, much more satisfactory, satisfact, satisfactory. The other thing too is that there's an informational sign that's been placed at the top of the dune. And it was put up there, I think about a week ago or so, and it's adhered to the deck. So people can, it's, it's kind of low, but, but you can easily read it. It's got information about the station. And I know, Scott, how much time have we spent up there since the sign went up?
Probably, like you said, I've lost track of the hours we put in up there.
Yeah, but literally people reading it to their kids, people stopping and taking pictures. It is generating an immense amount of interest in what's there because before that, people would walk up and they look at it and they not know what it is. So a little bit of signage is going a long way towards generating interest. And we're really pleased with everything that's, that's gone on and we look forward to the next step in terms of the development of the site. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ian Fox, in Sagittuck. I'll be brief. I wanted to raise just a couple of points about the pop-up patio deal. I mean, that y'all are working on. And I wanted, first off, to, to praise the council for taking the time to think that thing through and get it right. It's a, it's a major policy change. And I think it's worthwhile thinking about how it came to be, the time it came to be, and what it was designed to do in its first iteration. When it looked like restaurants in general were going to be in tough straits to be able to provide social distance and so on and so forth. And so what really amounted, I would characterize it more as an emergency provision, which was, I think, well taken. And I think served its purpose and, and then some. But in its second iteration, and what you guys are looking at right now, it's really, you know, it's, it's a long-term policy change. And in that vein, I wanted to offer just a couple of, God knows, there's probably, I mean, you've taken the time already. And I know there are lots of opinions and so forth. But just a couple of considerations that I would ask under the heading of equity. And the first of the two equity considerations, I think, is equity for the taxpayers. They're the ones who own the streets, it's their property, it's the city's property, but it's funded by the taxpayers. And so, again, different from an emergency policy, from a long-term, how we're going to do business policy. I think it's reasonable for the taxpayers to expect something closer to fair market value for that property, for the use of that property. You know, we put in, or you all, whatever the council put in, Cindy's recommendation, I think, three hundred bucks or whatever it was for the application for a pop-up patio in the emergency session, in the emergency setup. In reality, most of the restaurants and bars that participated in that made thousands, tens of thousands in some cases, maybe more, which I do not begrudge them one penny of. But I think for the taxpayers to get three hundred bucks for thousands of dollars of profit to a private operation is a lack of equity. How you, how you go about solving that? I mean, I, I have some thoughts, I actually, I thought she was going to be here tonight, Christine Pierce from Wix was, we chatted the other night. We've both been drinking, but, you know, she mentioned something that I, in hindsight, I thought made perfect sense. A per foot rate. It does a couple of things, it, I mean, probably does a number of things, but a couple of things that it, it addresses for me. One of which is places where, and I don't want to name names, but I could, where the pop-up patio area went largely unused for a great amount of the time. And yet, it was roped off, you know, because that was the deal. If it was on a per square foot basis, businesses would be judging revenue against risk and against cost and so forth. So anyway, that's one. The second.
Dan, I'll remind you, you have three minutes, so you're already way over. So if you could wrap it up, that'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Second point on equity is, I think there should be equity for all business owners. I don't think, I think you're on, we'd be on shaky ground to extend a licensing operation solely for restaurants and bars on a long-term basis. I think, I think, in fact, if you offered it to all businesses, given, again, a more aggressive cost structure, you would end up with most of them being restaurants and bars. But I think, forgive me, but T-shirt stores or, or a B and B that wants to, you know, dedicate a space in front of their building for parking for guests or whatever. Again, there are issues of equity, I don't have the answers, I just give you the point. So thanks for the extra time, Garnett.
Thank you. You bet. All right. All right, no one else is present? That, communications, we received a resignation from Chris Peterson from the planning commission, so we'll be working on that. Any reports from boards, commissions, or committees? Anyone? We're, from the recycling committee, we're meeting Wednesday here in this room, we're going to try out the equipment, see how, how I need Jamie's help. Very good. Any other boards or commissions? All right, council comments, I'll just start with Lauren.
I'll just say congratulations, Dan and Scott. I look forward to your leadership. And it was a pleasure serving with you as mayor in my first term. So it was, it was great and I look forward to just being proactive in the future and being organized. And I look forward to the year ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Lauren's comments. I'd like to congratulate you on, on your role as mayor. I'd like to thank Mark for, for his leadership over the past year. As Lauren pointed out, we were both new in the council and you were extremely, I think, patient and gracious with us as we, as we learned the ropes. And so thank you very much for that, sir. And she's not here, but I'd just like to thank Chris for her long service to the city. And I'm just really looking forward to getting back to work, hitting the ground running with a strategic planning session. Hopefully, hopefully within a few weeks, maybe?
Yeah, I'd like to also acknowledge, and thank Chris Peterson for her many years of service at a variety of positions, living term as mayor. And I mean, she pretty much was a, was a utility player. She filled about every role that an elected or appointed official could fill in, in this city. So that's, appreciate her, that service to the city. Also, I'd like to mention, a little surprise this didn't come before us, but reminding council and the public that this Thursday is Veterans Day.
Oh, yeah.
And eleventh hour of the month, the, whatever. Father Corey will certainly let us know what that's all about. But anyhow, just remind anybody that there will be, I am sure, a Veterans Day service at the.
That's a good point.
Memorial on this Thursday, typically at eleven o'clock. Very good.
Corey had that posted on Facebook, so thank you for the reminder. Ken?
I'd just also add my congratulations to you guys and, and thanks to Mark for doing an excellent job. He had big shoes to fill. And to welcome Russ to, to our next meeting. Let's appreciate him being on board with us.
All right, very good. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.